President.
Mr. Rickman.
Here.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Present.
Mr. Devine?
Here.
Mr. Davis, can you give us a thumbs up? Mayor Benjamin.
Present.
He's here.
Thank you.
Let's endeavor to handle those tech issues immediately. This, I'm not sure, I think, I think in one of the earlier meetings, we actually issued Mr. Davis's cellphone call in, and if that's what we have to do, let's do that. Because I need to fully evolve in a full discussion here, and this is important to him. So maybe encourage Cory to go that way. Okay?
Yeah.
Want to thank everyone for joining us in this online meeting today. We're gonna, we're gonna have a, we're gonna try my very best to direct traffic, working with our city manager and city clerk, as we're gonna discuss the ordinance before us. We, it's our pleasure to be joined by our state epidemiologist, Dr. Linda Bell. And then we're gonna have a period of executive session to receive some legal counsel from our, our, our city attorney. And then we'll kind of go, and if there's some public action, we'll have public action. But, man, city manager?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, are you going to start with an invocation, Mayor Benjamin?
Please, I'm sorry, thank you. Reverend McDowell, would you please?
Yes. Let us pray. Create a merciful God for this day and for all that you've done for us. For the beauty, for the grace-filled opportunities you've allowed us to share in. Lord, we thank you for this gathering, and we would pray that you might sensitize us to this critical need within the confines of this, our city. Watch and protect us, yet allow us to be sensitive to what we hear today. We ask it in your name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
At this time, we would ask for council to adopt the agenda.
Is there a motion? Mr. Duval, is there amendment to the agenda or executive sessions?
There is, well, we will add state roads to the executive session, which is the number one item on the agenda.
And I think we'll take that up whenever you all take up executive session, Mr. Duval, Mayor Benjamin. So I was asking you at that time.
Motion to adopt the agenda?
It's still had to come up.
All right.
Unmute me.
Mr. Davis? No, 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 don't unmute yourself.
I'm not muted.
Is there a second? Yeah. I'll second the motion, move the previous question on adoption of the agenda. Quick, please, color roll.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Hi.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Hi.
Mr. Devine?
Hi.
Mr. Davis? Mayor Benjamin?
Hi.
Thank you. At this time, I will read into the record the emergency ordinance item listed as ordinance number 2020-059, emergency ordinance requiring that face coverings or masks be worn in public in the city of Columbia during the COVID-19 public health, emergency, and recovery.
Right. Is there, is there a motion?
I move the adoption of the ordinance.
Is there a second?
I guess.
All right, we're now in the discussion period. And I'm not sure if we want to have an explanation of the ordinance. I mean, it's been available publicly for a week now, and we've had significant public discussion, voicemails, emails, obviously social media discussions, but we've gotten a pretty good read from the public as it relates to the, to the ordinance before us. So unless we want to do a deep dive into the ordinance as it's currently written, I would like to defer to our state epidemiologist, Dr. Linda Bell, for some comment, and certainly we'll have an opportunity maybe to ask some questions of her. And then she's got, she's got a, she's got a lot of work to do, helping us to control the spread of coronavirus and manage to stay through the pandemic. So I'm a, after we're done, I thank her so much for her time in service, and we'll get on with the city. So, Dr. Bell?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Benjamin, and, and thank you to the members of the city council for inviting me to provide a perspective. And I, so I think to share some information, I did want to provide just a brief update to sort of speak to the important role of the use of masks that can help us in reducing the spread of COVID-19. Is that, is that okay?
Absolutely, yes ma'am, absolutely.
So, and I so greatly appreciate that the city council is taking a lead in engaging on this issue. And I think in Columbia, from the outset of this pandemic, you have all taken proactive steps to protect the people of Columbia. And, and I want to thank you for that and commend you for your leadership in the state for doing that. And it's been tremendously helpful in our efforts to reduce the impact of the virus. I'm sure, as many of you know, at this time, very unfortunately, our COVID-19 rates have sharply increased. We are now a state on the national picture among a handful of other states considered to be hotspots. Our rates have increased in the past two weeks. And in fact, I got a report this morning that 42% of all the cases that have been reported to us since the first cases were identified in March, 42% of those cases have occurred in the last two weeks. And so this is a very, very troubling trend, and, and it tells us that enough people currently are not taking this pandemic seriously enough, or adopting the measures that we have been recommending throughout this course. And just another recent finding that I want to share with you is that we are also collecting demographic information, including age group. And there has been a dramatic shift in the age group of, the age groups of those positive cases. So from about March, from the beginning when we began our surveillance through the end of May, the majority of our cases were in those older, I would say over the age of 60, roughly. But since the, the week following Memorial Day weekend, we began to see an increasing trend, not only in overall cases, but when we looked at the demographic information, there has been a shift in, in fact, a flip in younger age groups being impacted. We have seen a 100% increase in cases between the ages of 11 and 20, a significant increase in cases between the ages of 21 and 30. And so previously, the majority of our cases occurred in those over 50, and now the majority of our cases are occurring in those under 50. And, and so I see this at this time, this is just a critical juncture in our efforts to control this virus with this dramatically increasing trend in disease activity. One day after the next, we are topping our previous counts in the last week, I think on four days of the last week, we exceeded the previous counts. And so I think as South Carolinians, if we don't drastically increase the practice of mask wearing, and, and this has been called social distancing, and I actually like the term now physical distancing, that we will continue to see case counts rise even more. We don't have a vaccine for COVID-19. We are unlikely to have a vaccine, I would estimate until the year 2021, based on previous vaccine production. So currently, all we have is the ability to reduce exposure.
I guess.
Through using, so that's through using the only two tools at our disposal, which is the routine use of masks while in public or around others, and staying physically distanced from others. And every day that we, that we continue to not have that widely adopted, we're extending the duration of illnesses, of missed work, absenteeism, hospitalizations, and in fact, deaths in our state. We want people to understand why the masks are important, that the virus doesn't spread on its own, it's spread around the state by people who are infected with the virus. And this could be people who are infected, but they don't have symptoms. People can spread in the two days prior to even exhibiting symptoms, so we can't try and distance ourselves from people who appear visibly ill. That's not effective. And so we can't anticipate where we may encounter someone who's infectious at work or the supermarket or a friend's house. So this is why we're imploring and asking that it be our social responsibility to wear masks so that we don't make other people sick, that we don't unknowingly spread the virus, or you don't unknowingly encounter someone who could be spreading the virus to you. It does mainly spread from person to person by someone inhaling those respiratory droplets that are produced when an infected person not only coughs, but if they talk or breathe. So it is the, it is the masks, cloth face coverings that help these respiratory droplets that are airborne from traveling through the air to others. And, and this is why we should, we should wear masks whenever we're around other people in public spaces, and it is difficult to physically distance. So, you know, it, it, it just, other prevention measures trying to anticipate is one issue when you think you might encounter someone who's ill. But the other thing that my observation is we're seeing in our, in our younger population is that people may, may actually be aware of these, these facts that we're telling them, but they're taking that chance. Either we may not personally feel at increased risk of becoming seriously ill, but while we've seen the shift in reported cases in those younger populations, we have not seen a shift in the age group where deaths are reported. So as our younger populations, who are much more likely to be socially active, to participate in recreational activities, I am most worried about this, these younger groups, they may not be at risk of being hospitalized, they may have milder illness, they may then be able to remain active while they are sick, but they are putting others in the population at increased risk for hospitalizations and deaths, for people who are vulnerable, people who have underlying health conditions that end up, that do end up in the hospital. And so it is something that we're imploring everyone to be aware of. If you, if you think you're only taking that risk for yourself, you're imposing that risk and fueling this pandemic on others in your communities, in your neighbors, in your families. So I, I do think it's somewhat unfortunate that it is, that we can see that, that our recommendations are being disregarded. I am very alarmed and disheartened. I see image after image of, in the press, of, of large crowds and recreational activities, and I will scan those photographs and have difficulty finding masks in, in very, very few people in these large recreational gatherings. So I, I do want to reiterate that we, with what we have in place now, we are not being effective in stopping the spread of this disease. We were hoping to have cooperation, compliance, behavior modification, and we do know that people are not heeding just this, the call to please practice social distancing. So, you know, more stringent measures have been shown to be very effective in other jurisdictions, where the, the widespread use of masks has been required, and we have seen significant decreases in disease activity in other communities in the United States and in other countries. So there is abundant evidence that those two tools, the widespread use of cloth masks in public, and, and practicing physical distancing do work. So Mayor Benjamin, with, with, with that information, I'm, I'm happy to answer questions if there are any. Thank you for allowing me, for inviting me to give some, to give that update.
Thank you, Dr. Bell, and thank you for your incredible leadership you've shown over the course of the last several months. It's been inspiring, and we are, we're incredibly thankful for you. Questions of Dr. Bell? Mr. Rickman?
Hey, Dr. Bell, thank you for taking time out today. I know you've mentioned the increase in the, in the younger population, and, and I was curious, because it seems like that a lot of that, are those linked, those aren't linked to hospitalizations, are they? And is there any, I guess, evidence that shows that it, it may help in the long run for them to build up immunity to this, being active? Obviously, high-risk folks and elderly need to stay sheltered because they have underlying conditions, but, you know, one of the, we keep seeing is, is this little spike that's happened, and, you know, it's been several weeks, we had mass protests in Columbia, Greenville, Charleston, with people over 30, to be quite honest, that were large people spreading from over. Is that any play in it? And, and how is the asymptomatic? I mean, how do, do people get the antibody? I'm trying to understand, because if you keep everybody kind of away, because there's no cure today, right? So how do we keep fighting it?
Well, I, I think your, your main question is, is about herd immunity, but I will answer the question that, that the hospitalizations are not correlating with what we're seeing in the increase in cases overall. We've seen a dramatic increase in cases overall, and a slow increase in hospitalization. And one explanation for that is that the dramatic increase in younger groups who are less likely to be hospitalized. But to, to address your question, I think you're asking about herd immunity, I think, is there some possibility that we may benefit from having all these young people get sick and then develop immunity? And at this time, we actually don't know if people do develop immunity. We don't know if people can be reinfected. And when we seek to get herd immunity, if, if we knew that that was the case, the way we don't want to achieve that is to have a rapid increase in cases that can potentially overwhelm our healthcare system. So we can expect that hospitalizations will trend upwards, and that where we were at the, at the early stages of this outbreak, when we were having to cancel elective procedures to make sure that we had ample hospital beds available, that we have ample ventilators available, if we let our disease rates go up too quickly, too dramatically, we don't have a healthcare system that can absorb that many sick people all at once. So it's not really a benefit to allow a large number of people at one time to get sick for the possibility that they may have herd immunity in the future. As far as, as test results, and in people who are asymptomatic and they test positive, there are two different kinds of tests. Just quickly, there is a test that we consider a diagnostic test. It detects the, the genetic material in the virus and tells us if somebody is acutely infected. The other test that, that is an antibody test that detects, protect, well, it detects antibodies that develop in the blood. We don't know if it's a protective antibody. And so we, we don't have a test now where we could, you know, check the people who have previously been ill, even if they've been asymptomatic, and decide, well, you were infected before, you didn't have symptoms, and you're not at risk of getting infection in the future. And the other point about all those asymptomatic individuals is that they may not have symptoms, but they can be spreading the virus. So I think you had a number of questions in there, and I hope I addressed all of them.
I, I did want to follow up on the testing, because that's one of the things that, that I've heard of multiple, people getting multiple tests, and wondering how, you know, you're able to identify that, because I've probably talked to at least two dozen people who have been tested, and they've had the various tests, from the blood test to the nasal swabs. One nasal swab takes five to seven days, and the other one's done in the day. They're getting positives, negatives, positives. I mean, they could take the same test the day and come up positive in one and negative in the other. And so, you know, can you maybe just describe to us a little bit on the testing, what y'all recommend that's really working and what's not?
Sure. Our priority for testing is people who have symptoms that are suggestive of COVID-19 disease, and this can be a myriad of symptoms, upper respiratory, it could be gastrointestinal, muscle weakness, aches, fever. It can be a lot of things, but if you suspect that you're ill, then we recommend that you be tested. If you're a contact to someone.
Yeah.
If you're a contact, if you're a contact to someone who's been ill, we recommend that you consider being tested if it has been at least seven days since your contact, because it can take a while for a test to turn positive. So we know that some people will learn that they've been a contact, and they will immediately be tested. And this, this could be one of the issues with why people repeatedly get tested. So if they immediately get tested, but they, the virus isn't high enough in their body yet to be detected by the test, then they may actually have an initial negative test, even though they've been in contact with someone. But if you waited seven more days, you may turn positive. So it could be that some of these individuals who are contacts, they get a test, it's negative early on after the contact, then they develop symptoms, and they get another test, and they turn positive. And so this is the, this is the test, it's called a PCR test, collected with a nasal swab, that is diagnostic of acute infection. There are some indications for repeat testing, and that is primarily in healthcare workers, because we have to exclude healthcare workers who are expected to work in an environment where they're routinely providing care, that they must be negative. And so if a healthcare worker tests positive, we exclude them from work, and, and then after 10 days from the onset of their symptoms, if they have symptoms, we retest them. If they remain positive, we keep them out of work, then we retest them again. And so they, we retest them until they turn negative so that they can return to the work site. There aren't many other occupations where we recommend repeat testing to, to detect a negative test. So for the general public, if you have symptoms, we say that you isolate yourself for 10 days after the onset of symptoms, and if your symptoms have resolved, no fever, and it's been at least 10 days, then you can return to your normal activities at work, you don't have to be isolated. It's a bit of a puzzle to me why some other people are seeking to, to repeatedly be tested. People are seeking the antibody test, and at this time, the antibody test just doesn't tell us a lot, it tells us about previous exposure. It doesn't tell us if they're protected. And so that kind of in a nutshell is, is an explanation of the available tests.
Thank you, Dr. Bell. I think, you know, I think what creates some confusion in that is that when you talk about getting people to a negative status, and they get to go back to work, but then there's this, I guess, there's not enough data or not enough information that you really don't know, if you have the antibody, then what you're saying is you're really not safe, and you're not safe for everybody else. So it creates kind of a confusion between all of these tests and the results, and what are you, you know, like the chickenpox immune to it or not? And, and so I think there's a lot of confusion in that, and, and I'm not sure how we continue to move forward without getting to a point where we, we know that we can move forward.
Well, yes, and you, you make an important point that I neglected to mention, is that one worry is that people do try and use the test for decisions about what they should do. So if you've been a contact with someone, and you test negative, that doesn't mean that you should not still remain in quarantine. So we are seeing some individuals who say, hey, I got tested, I was negative, you know, I can go out in public again. That's not the case. If you're, if you're a close contact, you still should stay in quarantine for 14 days, regardless of your test results. There are some work sites, I think, that are requiring workers to have a test to, and these, these would be individuals who have not had a previous positive test. These are just individuals who work sites are saying, we want you to have a test before you come to work. And that's not particularly helpful, because in the subsequent days, they could become exposed, and then they're positive. So those, the PCR test, that the test that detects the genetic material of the virus is only a test at a point in time. If you test negative at a point in time, you still have to practice the use of masks, the physical distancing, and you may later be exposed, and you would have to be tested again. The antibody test tells you about previous exposure, but it can't be used as a, as sort of a clean bill of health, or that you can, you don't have to practice, you know, the social distancing or so forth. And we are, we are really hoping for a test in the future that will give us evidence of immunity and protection, and that is one thing that could help us with, you know, having some individuals be able to, you know, by some means, I don't know, there's even discussions of some sort of electronic certificate or something to show that you had a protective antibody, but that is also in the future.
Which, you know, in the, in the whole conversation, what I find very interesting is, is that, you know, the guidelines tell you not to go get tested unless you've got symptoms, but it seems like our biggest problem are the asymptomatic people, correct?
Well, I wouldn't say that asymptomatic people are our biggest issue, because it is asymptomatic people, there is evidence that they can spread infection in the two days prior to developing symptoms. So they're not necessarily driving the epidemic. It is more likely to be spread by people who are, who have symptoms. I'm sure you can picture the difference between someone just talking or breathing and spreading respiratory droplets versus a person who is actively coughing and spreading respiratory droplets. So the risk is higher with contact to sick people, but asymptomatic individuals are certainly part of this, but I, I would not say that they're the biggest part. It is people with mild illness, and, and people just, you know, not using masks in public or socially distancing.
Yeah, just seeing based on your discussion earlier about the, the, those younger, that's basically what you were alluding to, is the growth was the asymptomatic. So I was just trying to understand a little bit, we weren't pushing more on the testing cycle.
Well, again, not necessarily, because what we know from probably all of our behaviors is that, I think each and every one of us, we, we've gone to work sick, you know, because you felt like you had to be there. So young people, they can, they can be symptomatic, but they're still socially active, and they're not wearing masks. So the biggest driver is people who are infected with symptoms. Asymptomatic people is part of it, but I, I think these young people, because they can tolerate illness better, and they pay, pay less attention to that, it is, it is them, this younger group that I'm very concerned about, that they, they do have symptoms. I know this from direct experience, that, you know, while they felt sort of ill, but they didn't want to cancel, you know, on some important event they wanted to participate in. So that is a, that is a, a big problem in our, our young people who are, you know, visiting our bars, going to the beaches, it is that younger population who are less likely to stay home when they're sick.
Other, thank you, Dr. Bell. Other questions, Ms. Devine? You're, you're unmuted, me.
Thank you, Dr. Bell, and I appreciate you being here and giving us some information. Just a couple questions. One is, you know, there's always studies that people can point to that will say conflicting things. You know, a lot, for, for us non-medical people, we're, we're trying to decipher the, the differences, but based on where you are, and the studies that you look at and rely upon, and you find are credible and from credible research, have you found studies that show that masks are ineffective in helping slow the spread, stop the spread of this virus?
So, Councilwoman Devine, I wouldn't say that, I wouldn't say that the masks are ineffective. The way I answer that question, is there not 100% protection against exposure? Especially masks that are especially masks that are available for the general public. And I wouldn't want that message to get confused with someone saying, well, I said that the masks don't work, so let's not use them. That is absolutely not the case. It could be the difference between you're reducing your risk of infection from if you have close face-to-face contact with someone who coughs on you or breathes on you and you, and that contact is of a duration of, of, you know, about 10 minutes or so and, and they're infectious, you would have close to, and, and these are pulling these numbers completely out of the air, but I, I would say you have greater than a 90% chance of being infected. If one of you had on a mask, then you could reduce that risk to, say that you could cut it in half. Again, that's an arbitrary number, if one of you wore a mask. If both of you wore masks, then you might reduce the risk of exposure to, say, 25%. So the answer is that, yes, the mask works in reducing the risk of exposure. But what we know about the cloth masks that are, you know, different from what's used in healthcare settings, that they have leakage around the, around the side. So they can still allow respiratory droplets to enter. We can see a lot of the use of masks where it might be covering the, the mouth, but not the nose. Masks don't offer you complete protection for your eyes, because that's another way the virus can be introduced. In a healthcare setting, they wear, these are N95 masks. We say that they're fit-tested, which means they have a seal on your face and they have a certain type of filter in them that filters out a certain size droplet. So I, I, whenever I'm asked a question like that, I want to be really clear that I am not saying that masks do not work. They do work.
And then I was just looking at the numbers just from the last week. You, you mentioned the hospitalizations aren't growing at the same rate as the, as the virus, the new cases. But I, I was looking from June 15th, we had 536 people hospitalized. Then it went to 571, 607, 626, 660, 673, 692, to yesterday at 7:31. Are, have we seen those increases? I know you said 40, 42% of the cases, of the increased cases are in the last two weeks. Have we seen those kind of hospitalizations at any other point in this? Or these, or I'm wrong, are these, just seem like they are higher number of hospitalizations that we've seen before?
I, I would actually have to look back at our hospitalization rates, say around mid-April. But I do agree with you, even though I said that they, that the hospitalization rates are not, what I meant is they're not going up in direct proportion to the case rates. Yes, our hospitalization rates are creeping up, but the, the curve is not as steep as the curve for overall reported cases. And, but I, I do feel that, again, I would have to look back. We, you know, we have our state agencies that are helping with this response effort. They monitor on a daily basis, hospital bed utilization, utilization of ventilators and the availability of those. And when we get to a point where it looks like we are, are marginally reaching capacity, then they begin to make decisions about canceling elective procedures or redistributing ventilators or something like that. So we are keeping a close watch on that. But, and I'm sorry, I can't, I may be able to try and look back at April while we're on the line, but I, I'm, I'm not prepared to comment on comparison between what we're seeing now with hospitalizations and where we were mid-April.
Thank you, Dr. Bell. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Other, other questions? Mr. Brennan?
Actually, Howard had his hand raised first, Mayor, if he'd like to go ahead.
Go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Mr. Duval. He's on my screen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dr. Bell, this is Howard Duval. I want to thank you for your leadership and all the advice you've given our state here in these last few weeks. It's very comforting to have you standing there briefing us on the knowledge that you have of this virus. I have two questions that have come from the many calls that I have received over the last week. The first one is, the people that are opposed to this ordinance are saying that there's so much danger of wearing a face mask, mask on your face, that you can get all sorts of respiratory diseases and it is very unsafe to wear a face mask. And I'd like for you to talk about that. And then the, the penultimate question is that they say Dr. Fauci does not say you should wear a face mask. Can you speak to what he says?
Well, first I will address the question, or I guess the comment that masks are not safe. We, we do want to be clear that masks are not recommended for young children under the age of two and that masks are not recommended for people who have existing respiratory problems where they have difficulty breathing. So if someone who has pretty serious emphysema or COPD or someone is having an acute asthma attack, then they, they should not wear a mask because that could compromise their breathing. Those individuals, however, should consider that it would be best that they not be in public if they can't use that protection. But it is a myth that masks actually cause respiratory diseases. We, we want people to be aware that if they're using disposable masks, that they should dispose of them after they've been used, because the masks can get dirty and can become contaminated. If they have a reusable mask, they should follow the directions that, that those can be laundered. So the, the masks themselves don't cause respiratory diseases, but we have to practice those good hygiene practices. If you have a mask that is, it's uncomfortable or poorly fitting, you know, people will adjust the mask frequently. They'll put their, you know, they can put their hands on their faces. So you have to keep your hands clean, because if you continually readjust that mask, you're pulling it on and off, touching your nose and your mouth, it's not the mask that's the problem. It can be your contaminated hands where you're introducing the virus or other germs into your respiratory symptoms. So no, it, it is a myth that masks are not safe, except for the exceptions where, you know, people who can have underlying disease. And then as far as what, I'm not aware that Dr. Fauci has said that masks are not recommended.
Thank you.
Mr. Brennan?
Dr. Bell, thank you so much. I know you have a news conference here soon, so you being with us means even more. Quick question. Want to talk to you about hotspots. What, what defines a hotspot for DEHAC? And, and can you describe to us the additional layers of focus, attention, that those hotspots throughout the state get once they are defined and how you react to them?
Of course. A hotspot can have a variety of definitions. So I'll tell you what our investigations entail. We do receive, healthcare providers and laboratories are required by law to report all positive cases to DEHAC. We handle that information confidentially. We reach out to positive cases to conduct an investigation, to learn about their onset of illness. We collect demographic information that helps us inform the epidemiology of the disease. And then we also try and, we attempt to identify a potential source of infection by asking people, are you, are you aware if you've been around anybody who's ill or a positive case or something like that? And then all cases are reported by their, their address. So we look for clusters of cases by address. And this, this can begin within the household. If we see a cluster of cases within a household, that tells us that there's household transmission and that's not unexpected. But we also look for other common addresses like congregate settings. We can have multiple reports of cases that share this address and a nursing home would be a good example of that. And that gives us the ability to detect a cluster of cases within a nursing home or other congregate setting. When we look at data in communities, we look at cases by zip code. And if we see a spike in cases within a particular zip code, we will reach out to our frontline regional Epi investigators and ask them, are you aware of any community activities that could explain this? Has there been a festival or actually in some of these rural areas where they have very tight-knit communities? They can say, yes, you know, there have been, there have been some issues in our Hispanic populations, for example. They will live in close living conditions, share transportation, and they may, in their tight-knit social groups, may have relatively large parties of 20 to 50 to 100 people and not just Hispanics. We, you know, many of us are doing that. And so they can report that there may be an explanation for that within the community. We're not always able to determine the source of infection. So one example is when I say that cases are reported by their residents, after the Memorial Day weekend, we had a lot of people who traveled to our coastal regions, to the beaches. They may have been exposed unknowingly in a public setting like recreational activity away from their home. The case gets reported by their home address, but that doesn't necessarily tell us that's where the case was, where infection was acquired. So we don't always have the ability to identify the source of infection. But when we find these pockets of these clusters of cases, we can define them as hotspots if they have exceeded some norm, like more than three cases, more than three new cases in a zip code within the last 24 to 48 hours or an increasing trend within a particular zip code. And then what are the demographics of that group? If there are no connections among them, then we just call that, you know, community spread. But if they do have connections, social networks, then we try and make interventions with our community health workers. We offer testing to see if there are more cases that are unrecognized. And so we target our public health interventions to those. Those are a variety of hotspots. We will go into a nursing home and implement infection control practices by cohorting positive patients away from negative patients, excluding positive healthcare workers. So those are some examples of how we respond to a variety of hotspots.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. All right. Thanks, Dr. Bell. Any other questions with council or, or staff, Dr. Bell? I know she's obviously got her duties to take care of.
Want to thank Dr. Bell and just if we have any additional questions, can I get you an email, Dr. Bell?
That, that'll be perfectly fine. And even following a bit behind an email, I think Mayor Benjamin, Councilwoman Devine, they all know how to reach me. You will get a more immediate answer and I'm happy to respond to text messages and, and sometimes that actually works better for me. So I'm happy to answer any additional questions.
I won't share your cell phone number on this public platform, but I'll make sure members of council have it.
Thank you.
Again, we are in incredibly challenging times and your leadership has been amazing. And I appreciate your counsel over these last several months. So thanks for joining us.
Thank you. And if I could just applaud you once more before I leave.
No, thank you. Thank you.
These efforts from the local jurisdictions are, are badly needed with what we're looking at now. And I, I'm very grateful that the Columbia City Council is, is taking this under consideration because I'm, I'm very concerned about where the trend is currently taking us. So thank you.
And, and Doc, before you go, Teresa, did you have another question?
I just wanted to thank Dr. Bell and from a staff perspective and Dr. Bell for a local government practitioner like myself and working with, you know, over 2,300 employees. The posture we've taken with, you know, obviously we're public servants, so we've been working all the time at some of our public-facing facilities and sort of slow-walking openings, doing business still for the public remotely and by appointments, et cetera. Is, do you feel like that is the best posture to take as long as we can do that? Particularly with the numbers we're seeing at this time. We're just been trying to follow the data and I think lots of times we get questioned about that. Your take on that?
Are, are you asking about more gradual reopenings and more gradual resumption of certain services?
Right. I mean, that's what we've been doing. And so particularly as of late, within the last two weeks with the, the data, we've just tried to continue to follow that data. I know early on, there was particularly, and I've heard it still nationally discussed, about 14 days of decreased positive cases, et cetera. But without any firm guidance on that for a public agency like ourselves, ourself, when we have the ability to sort of slow-walk some of it, that's the position I've been taking.
And that, that is still recommended. I would say that that is still needed. We, what we had, had hoped to see and what we felt would give us a good indicator of a, a safer way of reopening was to have realized a downward trend in cases that was sustained for 14 days at a minimum. We, we didn't ever achieve that. And so to the extent that, that any delays can continue, any restrictions that can, that can remain in place, with the understanding that these, these are restrictions with the use of masks and physical distancing, any of those efforts will, will help us in slowing the spread.
Thank you. Thank you.
I, I just want to ask Dr. Bell then, just because it is a little confusing to me. So you're saying, or your belief is that, that the mask, let me see how to, to phrase this correctly. We mask, then that is a 90% protect, I'm, but you said about 90% protective to do it, which gives it a safer environment for us to go back to business. So I'm, but then I'm hearing now that we need to do more clothes. So I'm a little confused because by passing the ordinance that we're trying to get people to be safer, but at the same time get back to business, because this is a live-to-live situation. People need to be able to work and this is, so I'm a, I'm a little confused. It seems a little conflict and so they get back to business with, with a mask ordinance? Or is it not? I'm just, I'm confused. It seems a little.
Well, Dana, I think the question from the city manager was, early on in this discussion, we, we were, we were looking at 14-day deceleration as, as a standard. It appears, obviously, because of the, the global handling of the situation, that seems unlikely. And she, and she was asking guidance as, as we continue to open, should we be gradual and thoughtful as we do so? That, that is in no way philosophically or intellectually inconsistent with the discussion around, around masks. I think the reality, even as of the care Dr. Fauci's quote, I think Howard asked a question earlier. He also speaks very clearly about the importance of physical distancing and the fact that the mask can protect you to a certain degree, not 100%. It's protecting you from getting infected from someone who is either breathing or coughing or sneezing or, or singing or whatever it happens to be, in which droplets or essential aerosols go out. So masks work. So I mean, let's, let's not get into the global discussion. I don't want to go back to day one on, on this. She was asking for very specific issues as she makes decisions as an administrator to go, go back to work and make sure that the 2,300 of our, of our fellow teammates are, are, are safe. Masks are not 100%. Nothing we do is, is 100%.
Well, there is. We know that.
We, we know that. Yeah, so that, so the key.
But Richland County, and that's why I'm just trying to, just.
Yeah. Oh, I, I think, I mean, obviously, I think the perfect word would be, would be national discussion, if not in a statewide discussion. And certainly in, in our case, we, we're part of the Midlands. It'd be wonderful if all of our sister governments on the county or municipal level would, would, would join us. But we've never let that stop us from doing the right thing for the right reasons. I think we got to continue to be guided by our true north, which is public health and the preservation of human life. So on that, Dr. Bell, thank you so much. We're gonna, we're gonna wrap this. We'll have some more discussion. Obviously, then we have a, a, a public listening attentively to this discussion. We have more public discussion, then we'll have some opportunity for, for legal counsel and then we'll come back out with a, with a decision. Dr. Bell, thank you so much. God bless you.
Mayor, if you don't mind, if I, I just want to make one point perfectly clear. Because I'm a numbers person, I, I want to make perfectly clear the statement that I made about those masks, those figures that I gave, those were completely pulled out of the air. I, I wouldn't want anybody to repeat that I said that the use of masks was 90% effective, two masks was 50% effective and so forth. That was a, a, that was an example. I'm a numbers person. And so I, I don't want in any way. And so I I don't want in any way to provide some sort of skewed information. I just wanted to make that clear from that last comment that I said that, you know, the ninety percent effective, that that was a an example.
That's the way it was accepted and interpreted as well, Dr. Bell.
Okay, thanks, thank you so much, and I'll drop off the line now, I appreciate it.
You be well, bye-bye.
Great, me, bye-bye.
All right. And and Mayor City Manager, I know you you're with us, you have, I know you have some family obligations you got to take care of very shortly. So you're not gone yet, I know. This is the man CFO, Jeff Bayless, gonna be in your stead. Let's, let's go have some more, some more discussion if necessary around 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 the ordinance. And then I'll ask Mr. Duval maybe to make a motion. Anything else we need to discuss before before we go executive session? Really thankful for Dr. Bell's input, so Mr. Duval?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session to receive a legal advice related to matters covered by attorney-client privilege pursuant to Code thirty dash four eight seventy-eight-two COVID nineteen and state rules.
Is there a second? In this, then with the previous question, Clark, for all.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Hi.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Hi.
Ms. Devine?
Hi.
Mr. Davis?
Hi.
Mayor Benjamin?
Hi, thank you. Want to, it's a quick note to folks who might have been watching us and wanted to reengage. Um, all right, thank you. Mr. Duval, it goes to your motion, I want to make a friendly amendment to your motion. I'll play out the changes to the ordinance as discussed by by council and and some of the reasoning behind it. And the city attorney will 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 send the language as approved to City Public Relations or Public Affairs or Distribution. Upon the receipt of advice of legal counsel, we will be amending ordinance twenty twenty dash zero five nine, emergency ordinance, case coverings of masks to be worn in public in the city of Columbia during the COVID nineteen public health emergency recovery. To, in the interest of consistency and uniformity, to to adopt the approach being used in the city of Greenville, however, in the city of Greenville, South Carolina. However, the interest is is that this ordinance will apply to all commercial establishment establishments in the city, not just the the PU articulated in the Greenville ordinance, that we will, however, pursue civil infractions than misdemeanor charge that this would go into effect on Friday at at six AM. There are some clearly articulated exceptions to the ordinance that laid out in the the previously noticed ordinance, but we added a few in specifically where face covering would prevent the receipt of personal services. It's still clear that the ordinance applies to those older than ten years old. And while, of course, we we cannot constitutionally apply this to religious establishments, it's strongly encouraged that the use of face coverage is also recommended during religious activities as well. The the entirety of the of the ordinance, which is just in its spirit, is articulated by our state epidemiologist, Dr. Bell, as well as those we've come to rely on, like Dr. Fauci and every other public health professional, is that this is not a perfect solution. It's a, it's a move and a thoughtful step in the right direction that continues to guide us towards our true north. Our true north is simply the preservation of human life, to do what we can as quickly as we can, as much as we can to help us get out of this public health emergency and back to some sense of normalcy, where we can continue to engage with each other and congregate and 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 obviously see our economy recover. We're in, we're in difficult times right now, not just the social unrest around around policing and 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 as we deal with some age-old issues of race and and racism in America. But we are still dealing with a pandemic unlike anything we've seen since nineteen eighteen, dealing with economic dislocation unlike anything we've seen since nineteen thirty-two. It's a, these are difficult and challenging times. And I just want to thank my colleagues and and the hundreds, if not thousands, of citizens who's reached out to us both by 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 phone, by by email, by social media and made sure that their opinions are well-held. We do recognize that our responsibility is not only, and I will tell you, the 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 input I receive, I know every council member's had a different interaction. Input that I receive has been overwhelmingly in support of us doing something thoughtful in the in the interest of ensuring a higher use of uses of masks in the community. But but there was not uniformity, unanimity in that in that position. And it's our job, obviously, do what we can to protect the public, but at the very same time, as much as we can to protect the interests and the positions of of the public authority, but recognizing, obviously, that we have a greater goal here. I want to thank council again for for working with us through this, and our staff amazingly, as usual, as we execute. Again, this ordinance will will go into effect on Friday morning at six AM. And we will spend a great deal of time, as we have, through our resilient Columbia efforts, working with our businesses and our citizens, we'll make masks available to those who need them. Obviously, there's not an infinite supply, but we'll make a significant amount of masks available. And we'd ask that those who need them the most, obviously, we will have a a system for distribution of those clear and clearly articulated to the public between now and Friday morning. We'll also be kicking off a very aggressive Mask Up campaign. Our our folks in economic development and others, you know, we're, we're pushing towards, obviously, a cultural shift is only but so much government can do. We really are trying to encourage people to do the 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 small things that we can to to ensure that 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 we are indeed not just taking care of our, oh, this one temple God's given us, but we're also our brothers and our sisters keeper to take care of those who may not be as fortunate as as we are, or maybe working in places where they can't protect themselves unless we help protect them. It it's a, it's requiring something of all of us. But we believe a minor complication that will lead us to the situation where we can actually help save lives. That's our goal, that's our true north, that's what it's been from the very beginning, and that hasn't changed. So I I would move, while these are modifications, Ms. Duval, I I I move that we amend the 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 ordinance with with the replacement language that city attorney would will share immediately. And and if you're okay with that, I'll I'll begin, this is your 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 ordinance. Would you keep following that?
Yes.
All right, so you said, is there, is there a second?
Second.
All right, and further discussion? All right, with this question, Clark, for all.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
I'm I'm voting no on this ordinance, this version and the version before, I can't support in its state. I do support Matt, heard more of a campaign similar to what Raleigh's done and really capitalize our partners and our city staff and so forth, but that's where I am.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Mr. Rickman.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Hi.
Ms. Devine?
Hi.
Mr. Davis?
Hi.
Mayor Benjamin?
Hi, and Ms. Knox, if you could get that out immediately and certainly to our friends in the quarter-state and media, make sure, please, please, Mr. Duval?
That vote was on the amendment.
Amendment, okay.
And now we need to vote on the bill.
Would you make, would you move the previous question?
Move the previous question.
All right, second, Clark, call roll.
Mr. Brennan?
That sound like you. Yeah, all right.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Hi.
Ms. Devine?
Hi.
Mr. Davis?
Hi.
Mayor Benjamin?
Hi, closing comments. As we continue on this journey in Columbia to lead from the front, guided by our true north of saving human life, we we do know that we cannot let the perfect be the enemy of the good. We know the ordinance is not perfect, just like any other law that any government might pass. But it's a positive move in the right direction. And we want to make sure that we articulate our full commitment to each and every one of you who live in the city, work in the city, and your families, that we're going to do everything we can to to guide this city through this pandemic. Thank y'all, God bless you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Sure, move.
Sure.
A discussion with the previous question, Clark, call roll.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Hi.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Hi.
Ms. Devine?
Hi.
Mr. Davis?
Hi.
Mayor Benjamin?
Hi, thank y'all.